Round for introductions.
Jane Goranski, District 6.
Randy Taylor, District 7.
Juma Angoli, District 5, in the chair.
Leonard Watson, District 1, vice chair.
Frank Lyon, District 4.
Scott Burkison, District 2.
Seth Conley, also District 4.
The county council is speaking on this on the 28th of this month.
First.
First hearing exactly, 28th of this month, that's when they're gonna be talking about the first time. And in order to get our approval to the city, we had to have it before that time. So normally this is when the private review committee meets. That's why I called an executive order as requested by both of the boards to hold it on the 16th. Next, the action item that will be discussed tonight is the medical marijuana land use code amendments. We'll review the medical changes made by the medical marijuana task force in regards to how medical marijuana dispensaries are permitted in the City of San Diego's Land Development Code. You will have in front of you the city attorneys' memo in regards to this and the actual ordinance. And Dave?
I'm here.
And Dave is here for any questions?
I'm here to answer any questions you have. We've appeared before you many times before. The one thing that I would point out is medical marijuana task force has not made any changes to its report formally. The task force is no longer, it was disbanded. We have the pleasure of having another member of the task force, Larry Sweet, who is also from Ocean Beach here. The land use and housing had asked city attorney to make recommendations, write an ordinance. City attorney has written an ordinance. It's been before, I think council, council has made comments. I don't know what the agenda is on the 28th, if it's solely to address this ordinance. But if it is, the council offices, after a lot of public comment and further information, have made suggestions, additional suggestions. The instructions land use and housing gave to the city attorney was to write an ordinance utilizing the medical marijuana task force report, as well as certain recommendations from them, I have a copy of those if you wish, as well as a memo from council member Faulkner with regards to land use. So my opinions are those of the task force. We each had our own opinions during the meetings of the task force. I have chosen to support the opinions of the task force, the ones that a lot of work put together, I think they're fair. I think that making accommodations for the folks that need medication is warranted. I do not however agree with proliferation. After all, we have two pharmacies in Ocean Beach. So looking at that, possibly we could have two marijuana dispensaries in Ocean Beach as well. But with that, I'm open to answering any questions that I'm able to from the board.
Dave, can you answer me this question? The task force was set forth with some kind of guidance admission. Was it to form a process for approval or to form a ban?
It was not to form a ban, absolutely not. The reason that the task force convened and was appointed was to find a way that the individuals who need the medication find a way for the city to work with the city's process.
Okay, and from your recommendations to what we're looking at today, is this draft legislation more stringent or less stringent? I have my input here.
And I can only give my opinion, my opinion is more stringent than we laid out.
More stringent than what you laid out. Okay, that's all.
The other thing that I don't know if you've got a copy of, if you have a copy of, is the comments from everyone working in the city. That was some of the information regarding, so if you'd like to read those, which you see on the film, I'd be more than happy to.
Like the one that says you're CPC?
Yeah.
What else did you have?
I got all kinds of stuff.
I got all kinds of stuff.
I get the same city attorney draft that you have. I have a copy of the district attorney's or the grand jury's report, I got a copy of the grand jury's, the IB's response to the grand jury, I don't know if you've gotten all of those, but I'm happy to provide those to you now or after the fact.
From my understanding, the regulations, it's still a lot of commercial, but they can't be in residential.
That's my question, don't call me exactly on the.
The UJ or with the C and the U, like with table 15.
Here's a question about, I think it's gonna be a point of such attention. Although we did vote to accept your recommendations and actually with an additional one, that it would go through process four in the city, which is akin to what a liquor store might have to vote. That seemed to be the general consensus, it was unanimous vote that we would accept yours with that additional one.
And that was my recommendations, the recommendation was not of the task force itself, it was not a process four. That was my recommendation and the recommendation of Councilman Faulkner.
My question would actually be about the buffer zones, 500 feet, churches, schools. This seems to be, really, I think maybe we're pretty much basically hung up, but if you could describe the process, why 500 foot buffer zones and the process zone that you came to that? We back that around whether it's 500, whether it should be more, whether it should exist.
And we had the same discussions, as Larry contested, we had the same discussions in the meeting. That's way too much, that's way too little, there was differing of opinion. I think we looked a lot at ABC, when you've got a liquor outlet. We kind of mitigated it with those, that's 100 feet in some cases. The 500 feet, I don't really know where it came out, where it came from. All I know was, it was suggested.
Do you know that with ABC, I mean with the ranch, let's say 100 feet, so the restaurant would not be within 100 feet of like a school or something like that?
It can't be within 50 feet of residences.
You said like at some cases 100 feet, is there a range of?
I couldn't tell you. I do know that if you looked at one of ABC's website, and a lot of it has to do with.
I can speak for that, so the ranges for the ABC are the burden of proof for the onsite and offsite sales of liquor establishment is 500 feet away from schools, churches, sensitive locations, et cetera. The burden of proof is on the community, okay? So AB 2500 feet and 100 feet, the burden of proof is on the community to prove that it is unacceptable at that range. Within 100 feet is the burden of proof of the establishment or the applicant. So anything closer than 100 feet, the burden of proof is on the. With the exception.
Those down.
Those are not, they're not on.
Yes.
Without, within the exception, and you're right, within the exception, with the exception of gas lamp, where there's C PUs required for every alcohol outlet, and that's because of CDC.
One thing I noticed is medical marijuana dispensaries shall not be permitted within 1,000 feet of schools, parks, churches, childcare facilities, playgrounds, libraries, and it goes on. But one thing in those in the past was churches wasn't added.
No.
Can you tell me why that was?
Churches and parks weren't a recommendation from the task force. That was added at land use and housing by council.
Parks wasn't added, okay. And why weren't they?
And discussion wasn't, discussion was brought up and the vote was that the main field, the majority of the task force in that field was something.
So the task force has been disbanded.
Yes.
So you didn't have a chance to form an opinion or against the new buffer, the 1,000 foot?
No, we haven't, we haven't mentioned.
Disgusted or?
We were assigned to make an opinion and once that was issued, we stopped meeting and then we disbanded.
But we could probably assume, in the workings of the task force, you considered the 1,000 foot? You considered a higher and lower and decided on 5,000?
There was a lot of discussion and then it pretty much got to council and council began to add different, listening to different community opinions, began to take it from that point and take our suggestion to tweet away from.
What I'll do is I'm gonna read his two points. Basically, his name is John Moon, he's a 78-year-old retired, does an OB, I've been here since 76. First reason was his personal, some years ago he had an arthroscopic surgery on both of his knees. Basically this major surgery on his lower spine. And so he got a doctor, from a local OB doctor, for prescription pills, but he felt the test didn't work. The pills include things such as Vicodin. And then he went back, got a recommendation actually for medical marijuana. He began to take it. He'd put in such things as marijuana butter, brownies, he'd get them from the local dispensaries, his wife would cook up, make him cookies. He would eat them just before retiring for the night. They would allow him to actually go to sleep, it made it, he, yeah, it made it better for him to go to sleep. He'd wait for the middle of the night, he was able to go back to sleep. And he puts "it works" in explanation points. If I eat it, I say it now before I go to bed, I get high and alert and can't go to sleep. Which is why I eat it just before I go to bed, just before going to bed. And it's marvelous medicine and the city council wants to take this medicine legal way and he said no. The second point was, some people apparently think that having dispensaries near schools or churches will somehow influence the school kids and worshippers or something. Are they serious? There is simply no evidence for this. It's based on fear, not facts. Everyone's going to Rite Aid here in Ocean Beach, walks by a liquor intersection, thinks that that influences people? No. Some people also apparently believe that dispensaries attract crime, again, there is no evidence for this fact. Fear, not facts. Show me hard copy that prove, prove that more crimes occur near dispensaries than near the grocery stores, liquors, or whatnot. So basically to conclude, his argument is there's also no proof that it causes any crimes and that's why he's against this such regulation. All right.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, or evening I should say. Thank you very much for taking up this critical issue. My name is Eugene DeVidage, I'm from District 6, that's where I live. But I'm here today representing Americans for Safe Access, which is the nation's largest organization of concerned citizens, advocates, and patients using medical cannabis to relieve symptoms from serious ailments that some of these folks suffer from, as well as their family members all concerned about the issue. I'm also here tonight as a part of a coalition campaign called Stop the Ban. This ordinance that is before you tonight is a de facto ban. I understand that we will have, you know, one or two areas around the city, maybe in industrial zone here and there, but really focused, when you shut down 100 businesses, when you shut down 100 facilities in the City of San Diego, that amounts to a ban regardless if a year later, after an compliance period, one or two opens up. Still, that is a ban. And what we as a coalition, which is over 20 local, state, and national organizations, including veterans, including clergy, the California Church Impact, is one of the folks that came out most strongly against this ordinance as a group that represents 1.5 million people of the Protestant faith that are against this ordinance because it affects the most vulnerable in our communities. And what we are urging you to do is to amend, to urge the city council to amend the ordinance as follows. Number one, to add commercial and industrial zones back into the list of allowed zones. Number two, to reduce the sensitivity use requirements of 1,000 feet away from everything, back into compliance with state law. AB 2650 is currently state law and that requires that collectives are 600 feet away from schools and that is it. No other sensitivity requirements. And the collectives in this city should be regulated just like pharmacies, as most of you agree, by right through a process one. That is how they should, the land use requirements should be imposed and that is how the community feels. We believe that the task force that made their recommendation was also very much in line with the community and those recommendations are not reflected in this ordinance either. I encourage you and really beg you to please come out on the 28th to the city council meeting yourselves and speak to these folks. And please make sure that the voices of the folks in Ocean Beach who will be most hurt by this ordinance, that is our sick, our dying, the most vulnerable in our community, that their voices are heard, will be there. We will definitely try and to make their voices heard, but yours are that much more important to the city council members. So please be there that day and ask them to ease up on these restrictions, to make those amendments to the ordinance. At the least, bring it back in line with the task force recommendations. So thank you very much for your time.
Hi, my name's Sam Mickel, I'm, I live in District 2.
You can just say it.
That's true. I live in Mission Valley, not in Ocean Beach, president, so I come here all the time. But I'm very happy to be able to have a chance to speak in front of all of you today. A lot of what I'm gonna say is gonna reflect what Eugene has already stated because it's the truth. The ordinance as written is a de facto ban and that's because it only allows collectives to operate in industrial use areas, that's it. We need collectives to be accessible to patients. At the core of this entire issue, it's an equality issue. It's about if you're sick and you're prescribed medicine, should you have safe and convenient easy access to it? And absolutely you should, whether that's a pill for heart medication or medical marijuana, you should have safe and easy access to that. And there's no way, there's no reason to discriminate against people who, whose medicine is medical marijuana by making them jump through hoops, drive across town, or with it being a de facto ban, driving those people back onto the streets to have to secure their medicine illegally. So right now, at this point, as a community, we have the opportunity to let our voice be heard and let these recommendations go on to the city council. Because in general, at least in my opinion, when medicine is trying to be given to people, medical marijuana has no big money lobbying. There's no billions of dollars behind this cause, there's no billions of dollars behind these patients. We have a pharmaceutical drug, X Y Z, Levitra, name a drug, I don't know what they all are, but those all have millions of dollars behind them and making those drugs accessible to people and easy, and easy to find with all kinds of side effects. So. Let me, in conclusion, thanks sir. That's what I was looking for. In conclusion, what I would suggest, and from what I've, I've spent hours on the streets talking to people in the community about this issue and what I would recommend from having spoken to many, many people, is that number one, the sensitivity restrictions are placed as per state law, AB 2650, that we do include commercial and residential zoning and that we do just have a process one permit, which is the same thing that a pharmacy would go through rather than a process four, just to keep everything safe and easy for people. It's not something that's an outrageous request, it's a humanitarian request. Thank you for your time, appreciate you.
Not repeat, anybody with an, without a. Just two points, two points. This is on the OB RAG, office is on Voltaire, which is District.
1.
1. Two points. As an attorney, I think the current ordinance is illegal and will go down in the feet, in a courtroom someday, which means the city, your city, our money, will be paying for the defense of that ordinance if the ordinance passes. So real important, it's gonna be illegal, it is illegal, that's my opinion, but if it goes to court, a judge will get to say that it's illegal and that's gonna be lots of money spent. Secondly, the OB planning board is right now the voice of the people of Ocean Beach, the residents, who are mainly tenants, businesses, the property owners. It's up to you to reflect the community's view on this. And as we all know, when Prop 19 came forward and voted that class in fall, Ocean Beach precincts had some of the highest level of votes in favor of Prop 19 straight legalization. So I'm against the ordinance and I thank you very much.
Hey.
Don't worry. Kedell, Paul here, Lakeside, Yobox, 2522. First off, the draft ordinance you have in front of you is only the LUH's draft ordinance. The PSNS draft ordinance won't be released until the Wednesday before it goes to council. So it is a two-part, so it's definitely need to have some looking into. You mentioned the commercial zones, they did permit them, but going through the municipal and looking for everything, they don't exist in the City of San Diego, so there is no commercial zones that are gonna be permitted. That will actually entail none of OB. All of OB will be out and there is five collectives currently operating that have had no complaints, so you will lose all safe access in OB. Also in this ordinance, deliveries are not addressed. So I ask city council to table this item until they can get clarification from Attorney General Harris because like the county board of supervisors did, they had to amend it four months later because they did not include deliveries. And deliveries is a part of California Health and Safety Code that was added January 1st, 2011. So my opinion on it is just to go back to the original medical marijuana task force recommendations and I appreciate this planning board actually addressing this issue again. I do understand a lot of them addressed it prior when the PSF of the LUH ordinance went to city council. So thank you, Ben, for addressing this issue.
Hi, I'm Larry Sweet, I'm living down at 4737 ER. Not only a resident here, but I've been here since 92. And was here probably before most of you were born in 67, 69 as well. I was on the task force and it was my pleasure to serve with people like Dave back there. I learned a lot about business from Dave. And the Reverend Riggs, by the way, the Reverend Riggs was the one that put the motion on the table to exclude churches from the sensitive areas of the task force and we all agreed. But when it comes to putting something before the city council, they've got all kinds of pressure groups behind them. They've got people from out in San Gito, they've got people from up north, all over the place coming down here and trying to tell us what to do here. And quite frankly, this is a personal issue for me, I'm a patient. I was a patient member on the task force. Without cannabis, I don't live. I'd have died back in 2001 without cannabis, that's a fact. If I could tell you about it, it would've taken a lot more than that. What I want to tell you is we need to get back to our recommendations, task force recommendations. We have right-wing people, we have lawyers, we have physicians, we have me, we have shop owners, we have everybody there. And what we did was we came together with something that we knew would work. Not something that was going to be trotted out and amended by the city council until it was an abomination. Look, let me tell you something about Level 4. One guy got up Level 4 at the task force, nobody even seconded the motion, so we never even considered it, never even talked about it. Why? Because it'll cost you north of $100,000. It'll cost you north of $100,000 to get started. So the people that you're inviting into OB to set up shop have to have over $100,000. They have to be able to put their hands on illegal drugs immediately and they have to have a number of other resources. I don't hang around with a lot of people like that, to tell you the truth. I don't think you want to either. All right? I mean, think about what you're inviting in when you invite Level 4 permit. We voted on the Level 1 permit, it went 5-5 in the task force, we were evenly split. That means, just like a pharmacy. Last thing I want to say and I really want to say it loud too. Marijuana is medicine, it's not liquor, it's not a strip joint, it's not a bar. I'm very serious about that. I need my dispensary so I can live.
Rachel Cole Scott, 3510, Santoro, San Diego. And I came down tonight, I got this online today that you were having this. And I wanted to come down and talk to you, so I don't think that you have a lot of experience with marijuana. I run a marijuana school. And this idea may be new to you about people medicating and doing what they're doing, but it's a business like any other type of business and it can be regulated and it can be monitored and held to very, very high standards. You have several shops operating in OB right now that are very good shops. I haven't seen too much activity there, police activity, problems, anything. I frequent shops quite a bit and say hi because of what I do for a living. And they seem to be integrating very nicely into your community. And those are spaces that would be open and they don't have anyone in them. Collectives are nice places, they have all different types of services that they offer to patients when they come in, not just medicine. And they take the place of something, it's part of the community. And I would really very much welcome you to visit one and get more information about them and look at people like patients that within your community that want safe access. So I just wanted to come by and say that they're not scary people, they're just people who are ill. So thank you.
Good evening, I want to apologize to Dave first. I thought he'd been asked to join this group, so I asked him to hand this out to the people seated. So you know my position. I'm about to become the least popular man in the room, very quickly. I operate a little business in District 1 here, it's called Second Chances Bread of Life. We operate out of Baptist church, currently in our 16th year of providing assistance to the needy Ocean Beach on a weekly basis. And these are some, Officer Dave Cirillo one time, I was attending a crime prevention meeting with the Ocean Beach Merchants Association and I tried to propose these ideas and Officer Dave correctly suggested that before I did this again, I needed to put them on paper and then deliver them to the proper, the ideas to the proper groups. So I'm beginning tonight, and once again, I don't mean to offend anyone personally, but we live in a democracy and we have the right to express an opposing view, thankfully.
Right on.
Our official position regarding the marijuana dispensaries. Rule one, it's called dope for a reason. Dope doesn't make you smart. It makes even a wise person think right is wrong and wrong is right. Rule two, drugs make a punk out of a hero. Drugs steal a person's conscience. People under the influence say things and do things that they would never even consider when sober. And they can never take them back. Rule three, you can't negotiate with terrorists. People lie, cheat, and steal for drugs. They demand your time, talent, and treasury. There's no middle ground, there's no fence to straddle. The only question left is, what part of no don't you understand? I forgot which gentleman it is that mentioned, we're about to invite some extremely, we are apparently already inviting some extremely unsavory influences into our community. I urge you to check for them. Thank you.
Thank you for listening to all the issues that we're bringing forth tonight. My name is Susan Sweet, I've lived in Ocean Beach for 18 years. I'm Larry's wife, I'm a parent of a teenager, I'm an educator for San Diego schools and I have a lot of strong opinions about this. I think, just first of all, I think we need to separate medical marijuana from drug use per se, I think they're different issues. When Larry got sick, we tried many, many drugs, he had a plethora of very toxic drugs he had to take to deal with a very serious illness. And he had an Ocean Beach doctor that helped him troubleshoot and found medical marijuana, which seriously, my daughter would even say that we both got Larry back because we didn't think he was going to die and he's still here today. That aside, I'm also a Girl Scout leader, Girl Scout troop leader. And I would like to say that when we had these issues about safe access, safe distance from places where we have alcohol, we sold cookies in front of Rite Aid. And we counted more cases of fear that came out of Rite Aid than we sold boxcar cookies. And so alcohol is on every street corner, you can't hide from it. It kills more people than marijuana could even possibly harm. So that's just one issue there. My husband was a clinical director of a drug and rehab, he's been several directors of drug and alcohol rehabilitation facilities. He has 35 years of sobriety from alcohol and hard drugs. And he's, and he had to make many decisions about using medical marijuana. It was a struggle for our family to make that decision, he did. He's used it safely, he's never touched a drink of alcohol since he's used medical marijuana. He hasn't used marijuana in 35 years. I think it's really important to differentiate medical, safe access medical use from drug use. And we've raised a teenager in the midst of this. She understands marijuana as medicine. She has counseled her teenage friends. She has counseled her teenage friends about safe access and medical use of marijuana versus recreational use. We don't put her in the limelight, we don't, you know, being a teenager is hard as it is, but she would speak if I asked her, if we needed her to. But I think education is better than hiding what we've got here on the table. We have to understand... Okay. I just want to say also, I had to find marijuana for my dying, father dying of cancer, and we had to go in bad places to find it because there was no safe access. Let's not limit safe access for people who need it.
Just state your full name.
Ben Wiser.
Down in Amity?
Yeah. So I've never been to anything like this before, and I heard it's a huge turnout, and nobody's here, so it's kind of spooky. I was falsely educated about marijuana as a child, and I might cry, because this is kind of fucked up. The ordinance hurts only patients, it protects no one. It helps only those who want to perpetuate the lies lingering to lose the beauty, power, and liberation of an innocent medicine that hurts no one. The people I know who live near the dispensaries had no idea they were there until I told them. This is not a dangerous substance. All that is happening with this ordinance is shifting where it's sitting. We're just shifting it. And it's going to fuck up a lot of people's lives. We're just shifting it. Nothing is changing but relocating it. It will change nothing. Nothing changes but the way you educate your fucking children.
Shh, can't curse on it.
Sorry, I wasn't reading. I'll continue again. It's not a dangerous substance, and to shift it, we'll have to travel to the areas where this new ordinance for a while. You'll have to risk your life if you ride a bike and enter an area of intensity and chaos. What damage have the local dispensaries done to seek a new cage, to cage them among the chaos we were seeking to avoid?
Let's go ahead and turn it off the public light, and we'll start on...
Good points raised. Probably one of the most grown-up planned use meetings I've seen in a while. People respect my take. One of the things that, I think there's two different things about, you know, talking about this issue, is first of all, a lot of things that people say are true on either side, that they're, with the current state of, I want to say, unregulation, there's definitely a lot of abuse on the system in terms of it not being for medicinal marijuana statements. I think I was in this room about four months ago, and I found documents just on the sidewalk that were just to help people, you know, the 420doc.com and chrisdoctor.com, so this is just where you go. You just go and say, "I have anxiety and migraine," you know, who's regulating that, but that actually happens. So sort of our de facto on drug fronts. And because it is something that's not necessarily legal anywhere else, there is definitely black market for it. There is potential for, I think, a need for regulation, we all seem to agree. It seems to just be about the level of regulation. The other thing that makes this kind of a difficult thing to talk about, you guys be exceptional at it, is that it's hard to kind of keep people focused on it. We're not here for legalization, we're not here for decriminalization, we're here to talk about land use impacts within the city of San Diego of these medicinal marijuana facilities. And I really commend you guys for focusing on that, and really the nuts and bolts of it. I think there's a lot of great points made, and that really helps us make our decision. I actually, Frank, thanks for stealing my thunder. I was actually going to bring up the fact that I think that the end result of this will end up in a courtroom somewhere. I think that medicinal marijuana advocates will pick and choose a case they feel that they're going to win, and they will set a good precedent. This typically happens in land use. For dental stores, they, you know, there'll be a precedent case that says, "This is a freedom of speech issue," and then bang, and then it's going to be struck down. I don't think that this proposed ordinance will hold up in court, I really don't. I have to agree with Frank that it's going to be a waste of time and resources. So I would say I definitely don't support it to a, to a certain extent. But, you know, all rules must be applied evenly, I think was my last point. And so we're kind of looking at what we're going to suggest the city, how we advise them. It's basically something that I think is fair. Are we going, are we singling out or discriminating against a particular kind of business opposed to all other businesses? I think with proposed amendments, or with proposed ordinance, we are. So, I mean, in terms of the process four, actually, I'll address that one too, because I am actually going to put that forth in the motion. And the motivation for that in this room, I think, when we took the vote was, what do liquor stores have to do? Why do these people are going to have to come before this board and give the community a chance to speak on them, to make sure that they're well-run facilities, that there's ample security, where else they need to run a safe, good business in OB? And so I don't know that, I know they open other ideas other than a process four, there's another way that people can be written in, the tort by trade that was going to get cut down. That was written in, they had to come in front of the board, and I don't think that's a process anything, really. It's funny, because there's another way to let the community have to say, and to make sure that they're safe and well-run facilities. So I'll dwell on that, because I listened to some comments from our board members.
Okay, I think most of the points have been made pretty well by the audience, so I won't belabor them, but I'd just bring up a few things. As someone who said, the voting record speaks pretty clearly in Ocean Beach. Ocean Beach has a precinct voted strongly in favor of medical marijuana back when it was on the ballot. The rest of the state has voted to legalize medical marijuana. The medical evidence is in, it's clearly a medicine. People have testified to that here tonight. So I think it's pretty clear that the city is attempting to zone it out, very specifically these dispensaries. And so I would just say, ask the board, as we did at the last meeting, to continue to support valid Ocean Beach businesses. Last time, I had business members here speaking, and it's been our position in the past, is to support Ocean Beach businesses. And so I think we should continue to do that. I'd come out strongly against the proposed ordinance, and probably go back to the task force. That's why the task force was created. I recommend that you use the task force as it was created in their recommendations. That's it.
I guess a little history lesson is instructive. I marvel at how something that started in the late 1990s as an affirmative defense against criminal charge of possession of marijuana has somehow turned into, basically, an argument that, and I keep hearing, or a fellow board member, that businesses can exist. The statute that established this whole scheme talked about nonprofit cooperatives of caregivers and patients. And I've looked at the state statute, and nowhere was storefront dispensaries contemplated in that statute. And now we've got basically de facto illegal, and they're illegal because there is no zoning code that permits the use businesses, because many of these are for profit. They got audited, all working, having resources to really dig, okay, but that would be found out. Operating everywhere. That being said, it's clear that it means it regulates. I am generally in favor of the land use and housing ordinance, with the exception that I think there should be an expansion of the zones into, say, the CC zone. But all the other restrictions, the 1,000 other restrictions, from all of the accessory facilities identified in the ordinance. But I would expand, I would support expanding the locations beyond commercial industrial. I know people are going to say that de facto with 1,000 feet, maybe you could shoehorn one into OB, but that's my position, that really, I think one per zip code would be an appropriate amount. So I'm comfortable with supporting the ordinance with a suggested amendment to allow expansion to CC zone.
Thank you.
I'll be quick. So the majority of laws and rules that are put into place are designed to keep people acting neighborly. And with all the best intentions that the task force moved forward with, and for whatever we're looking at right now, the intent was still to keep people acting neighborly. I supported the last regulations that were in front of us. I thought that was a good level of public discretion that allowed the neighborhood, the community, to voice their opinion. And the process four should not incur any financial difference than any other process, except that it's going to end up in front of city council, which is going to be the people of the community speaking to their directly elected official and asking him for what they want. Now, there are processes right now in place, it's called a variance. So even with this code in front of us, which I don't support, okay, this is too stringent, you can still use the variance process. Every day we get variances. In fact, the last home that was just built, and we were down appealing planning commission, was a variance. In fact, they had three variances. So there is a process. I don't agree that this is a ban, but I do agree with you in the fact that this is too stringent. So what I'll just quickly say is, we could try to amend this thing back, or do whatever, or we could just vote no for this document that we got in front of us tonight. I'll let them make their motion, decide how they want to try to hazard democracy on this. But this is clearly too stringent. The task force definitely wanted a lower level. We want discretion in the community, and just want things to run in a manner that everybody else does. So it's going to be interesting to see this eventually actually be regulated. I agree with my colleague right now in the fact that I don't know how we're operating. I haven't seen a single collective person come in and argue their point. That's all I'm saying. Yet to see a collective here in OB come and argue their point. Yet to see their books. Yet to see whether or not they're making money or not. So if the intent was what it was, then let's do that, let's run away, and let's get on with it. But this is too stringent.
Ready?
I think that we should reaffirm our prior motion that supported the medical marijuana task force, along with the addition of the added process four, just because it allows for community input.
Okay.
Well, it's wonderful being the last speaker.
I'm the last speaker.
No, I think we need some regulation, and we did support the medical marijuana task force. I think all too often, the city creates a local planning group and then ignores what the local planning group has decided. And sometimes they create task forces, and then they take the word of the task force, and they change it so much that it hardly resembles what the task force which we presented. And I was very comfortable with what the task force wanted, but as Brittany says, process four, I also support because that means it comes before us and it goes before the city council. It's another check and balance on the quality.
I agree that, I mean, why do we create a task force and then just totally change what they're doing? We then punt it as politicians, you, communists, you do, to land use allies, to totally change the whole thing. Why do you always give communities time if we're not doing that? I definitely don't support this at all. There was one thing I remember from the test.
I'm sorry, if I might make one comment. As Adella brought out, this is not the final draft. The final draft will come before the 28th. I just would comment that your actions tonight may send a message to our council, or what could affect the final results of the...
And that's right, I would like the motion to do that.
And Adella's not a terrorist, I've noticed.
And I believe that on the task force, the clergy, the guy who didn't want to take my church in there, because some of them are used for to provide access to people. And so why would then we put it in there? I don't, understanding that, I definitely, I don't support this. The voters came out with a 96 and supported 215. That's obviously where the public and the people are, they're on that side. So I'll entertain that motion.
Before, would you like, could we just speak to the process four, on the fact that, are we sure there's no legal fees, we all have our lawyer? I'm not as familiar with...
The process four is really, really, my understanding, is just another step to figure for another check and balance all over the city council. I don't know about an additional $1,000, that's something.
There is an IBA report, I'm sorry. There is an IBA report that actually covers all of the expenses that you all are referring to. So it is documented. It starts with the $8,000 deposit.
Okay, but not $100.
No, that's just the deposit, though.
It starts out with an $8,000.
It'll be about staff time. It'll be about staff time. And if they've done it correctly, then there would be no required staff time. We see process four.
We did what we did as a task force, you know, see that the range is between $35,000 and $85,000.
Yeah. The thing is, we have process fours coming here all the time, and then we're just...
I was process fives. So. Which go directly to someone else. So process four starts at planning commission, and then meeting appeal to the city council. Strictly. Process five, straight to...
It could go both ways, as you say, also, when we get in plus two in dispensaries, now we have a...
Green light district.
We have an avenue to, to have opposite, that became of the, you know, board's opinion or...
Process one goes directly to someone else.
We don't have to really see process four.
Process four starts here, appeal through the city council.
Right. So do we have the process four?
Clear?
From me, okay.
Well, I'll move that we recommend to the city that in Section 1401.612, the medical marijuana dispensary, that the Section A be revised to reflect this task force recommendation.
Sure, we could hear back.
He is, where I have a feedback.
One second. Go ahead.
That was it.
That was it, and when Seth gets it written down, I always have a feedback, so everybody hears it.
Okay, I want to be clear, before we begin to read this back, Jane, I realize that the change that they've made in the language that we saw from the task force to include the term "no commercial zone without, with residential use" is a major change from what we saw.
It's a major change.
Yeah. So there would be a difference.
And from 1,000 feet, it's a major change.
It's a double. We saw 500.
Would that even strike the churches?
I think rather than try to amend their proposal, I would feel more comfortable, I think the message would have a little more clarity if we were voting to recommend medicinal marijuana task force, the original proposal. Whether or not we modify that, it just worked out for that.
I would agree with that. I think that there are some things in what we're seeing right now, though, in this ordinance that should be included in our recommendation, like subsection B. If we look at 1401.614, and we look at subsection B, that I don't recall ever seeing on the task force recommendations, so I'd like that added.
Where's that?
It's on page 10, we look at a section 3, and also, we commit a dispensaries at a medical marijuana.
Okay.
So we commit non-abandonation, or additions, I asked.
So I think I have a point about that delivery.
Okay.
Get your voices out. Get out.
I would say, I mean, it seems to be, before we make the exact rule, it seems to be that we wanted to loosen requirements on the commercial zone. We also wanted to maybe address some buffer zones. Those are major changes, $5,000, $3,000. Attention, my number speaking for me here.
Yeah.
And the last one was to accommodate delivery.
Okay, I'll hazard a motion.
Could you please...
You guys can make it. Okay. I move to support, I move to support the recommendations previous of the medical marijuana task force with the addition of the review at process four, and then I will take the Which puts us basically back to what we voted on.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can support that motion, provided the... I can support that motion provided the provisions of subsection A of one four one, one zero, six one four are added.
Worth a thought here.
So, A, so a thousand, I'm fine with that as long as a thousand.
But the restriction... Okay, the original was five hundred. So, you're asking me to amend my motion to a thousand and to add churches? I would not accept that. It's okay, you're talking. Oh, I can't. This is a gun to my... Okay.
Compete for doing it again.
At the percentage B from the ordinance.
You can just read it out. I don't know where it is.
It's taken consultation by medical professionals, cannot be permitted.
On the side, yeah.
On site.
Okay, I will accept that.
Which one was that?
Consult not allowed onsite.
Agreed.
I hate to... I hate the same thing.
I know.
Don't do what the chair did. Your phone.
Okay, any other amendments to be added? Greg, one more time? No?
And that the delivery, what would the deliveries be? Accommodate, you know, the...
How would you like to first that?
Go to state law.
Okay, delivery is allowed per state law?
Yeah.
Is that your amendment?
Because they did add it in January first, twenty eleven. It's a new California safety.
So, Seth, is that your amendment?
Yes.
And that deliveries, you know, be regulated according to state law, the new state law?
Yes.
Okay, I'll accept that.
Okay, read this back. Okay, move to support recommendations of previous medicinal marijuana task force with addition to review at process four level and to add the land use housing recommendation that onsite consults not be allowed and that deliveries be regulated according to new state law.
That's my motion.
That's what I said.
That's a second. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Everybody's better about the motion, second. Any comments on the motion of the second? All right, all of those in favor, raise their hand. Everyone want to maybe... Oppose? Abstention. Motion passes six, one, zero.